Okay.
Well, I'll open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. The time is seven oh two P M. The date is June tenth, two thousand twenty five. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means members of the public applicants and members of the board can participate here in Town Hall or through the Zoom link virtually. This meeting is being recorded. Bill, let's get item one, put item two, and I will open up the public hearing for one fifteen Main Street. It's called a wine bar. This is a special permit application filed by Stephanie Pittman.
Yes.
Welcome, Nick. This is a special permit seeking approval for operation of a cocktail lounge at one fifteen Main Street. This will be in accordance with section three point one, section nine point four, and section ten point four of the pedestrian laws. For the record, could you just please identify the setting?
Yes, I'm Stephanie Pittman and my business partner here with me, Michael.
Hi.
He's also my brother. Daddy Business.
Thanks, Stephanie. Bill, you want to give us a primer and then we'll turn over the applicant?
Sure. This is a component for our mixed use project at one fifteen Main Street. The board, when they approved the original project, wanted a business at street level. This project, as you know, is approved for both special permit site plan as well as design review for the entire project. So the applicant, Ms. Pittman, is just coming in and taking an existing space. The use is. Staff believes it's a perfect use for the cultural district, ever downtown over the district, and it's in harmony with the intent of the bylaw. The special permit approval would be for the standard special permit, that's ten point four, and also at downtown overlay district, special permit. Now, I think you have it in your staff report, the applicant's justification statement says exhibit A. And she does a pretty good job of explaining how all the criteria is met for the D O D, as well as just the end of special permit. The only condition I recommend, I noted in the staff report, is that this doesn't affect the approvals of the principal special permit. That's a separate, and any conditions that apply to that would remain in place. Nothing is affected by this if the board chooses to. We also should, we do have one person on one and two, when you decide to.
Okay. Bill, can you remind me what section three point one is? I'm glad you referenced that.
Three point one is that is, I believe, the use statement.
Oh, that is the use statement. Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah, this, we have, we don't have a wine bar. We have a we have brew farmer's brewery and brew pub, but we don't have a wine bar per se. So we use, in this case, cocktail lounge. Thanks, special.
Welcome tonight. Do you have a presentation or is there anything else you want to share besides what was in the?
So your presentation, I think that was part of the application.
I was always saying I'm out here if you'd like.
For the, this is a public hearing. For the record, it's nice to enter it into the record so that people can see the recording.
I'll share this with the couple there.
It takes still a minute, so.
No worries.
Come on now. Look at this guy go. All right, and here is.
And.
We'll see. Okay, so I just run through and
Yeah.
Check if you want.
I can watch it through if you just go to past the agenda slide. I mean, the purpose of the presentation is to also explain the concept of this wine bar because it's a bit unique, and that's one of the reasons we're interested in actually opening this wine bar in Maynard. If you could just look on our slide, come here there. But firstly, just a little explanation about how did we come up with this idea? So this is actually my brother and my nephew and then my son in that photo, and we were in Europe and we came up with this. We were experiencing in Prague a wine bar like this, and the concept is a self pour wine bar. So we're going to get into that and we'll explain about what that means, or does it look like, what are the controls, you know, on sort of, you know, people being able to not overconsume, et cetera. So just keep going, that's okay. So the concept of the self pour wine bar, it's beyond a traditional wine bar. You don't just go in and sit at a table and order wine from a menu. You actually get assigned a card, a wine card. You'll see in the slides following this, what does that look like? But this option basically allows people to come in, they can choose some thirty two different wines, they can choose to get a sample, a half glass, a full glass. They can taste all of the different wines, have just one wine, it's sort of up to them at their own pace. And then the customers will have some opportunities for wine education, whether it's to QR codes, iPads at the table, sommelier chatbot that my son actually built. Wine education, there'll be wine tasting classes, we'll offer things for the community, private events. So the concept is really to teach people about wine, let them experience lots of different wines, or if people just have a couple favorites, they come in and enjoy that. So the, the concept of the self pour wine bar is what's the unique piece of this. There's not that many of these wine bars in the United States. We've looked and we've tested some of them out, actually. And there's only a couple other ones in New England area. The other concept is that the wine machines, the wine dispenser machines are programmable so that you can program how much people can consume within an hour. You can program the pricing, the volumes, you can turn the cards off if you need to remotely. And so you're in complete control of the dispensing of the wine. The wine dispensers also allow for quality and for, you know, you, you remove the waste that comes from like a person actually pouring wine into a glass. And it also aerates the wine, it preserves the wine for thirty days. So there's both a customer element to these wine dispensers as well as a business element to the wine dispensers. So here you can just see a representation of how it works. You get the wine card. You can select from a bunch of different wines and then, you know, again, we're going to program the actual wines, the dollar amounts, the consumption. We're going to monitor it as the night goes on. So there's just a little bit more here about how the wine self pour wine machines work. The controls that are on, how it dispenses the wine. So you can just keep going here, so some representative pictures and such. So one of the key things again is there's the ability for us to control the consumption, and I think that's really important when you're describing a self pour wine bar. It's not like people can just go and go up and sort of free for all as much wine as they wanted and do the signs. And it allows us again to offer the wine education that goes with the thirty two different wine selections.
And we specifically went wine only because we were looking for that wine crop, right? That's what we want, one of the people that are, you know, wine drinkers.
Or they want to, either they're novices and they want to learn about wine, or they could be very experienced wine drinkers as well and everything in between. So we're keeping it simple with wine only. That's why we're getting wine only with your licenses and looking for, you know, that, that wine experience. So you can tell a bit more about the wine dispensing machines. Each machine has four bottles. And then you have a selection of sizes that you can choose from. Keep going here. So this is just a little bit more, you know, operational controls. There's obviously verification by humans. On for supervisors, so we'll be working in the wine bar, offering education, monitoring behavior. We use the technology to monitor consumption and then we can turn it off remotely if we need to.
Yeah, so it, you know, no customer can go with two glasses in an hour or whatever we set and how many ounces we set in an hour, then it counts the day, you know, the time they're there, so. You know, that was really important with the whole system and that, and, you know, the ability to make sure that the, the wine glasses are poured exactly the same every time. So you don't get, you know, ten ounce glass or nine ounce glass, you know, you're getting that same, you know, glass all the time. You really know what people are drinking inside your place. So it's very, very good.
The other thing is the wine dispenser machines, they're very high tech and they offer, they aerate the wine, they keep it at the right temperature, so it's really high quality delivery of the wine.
It uses argon gas that, that, once the wine is open, the argon gas keeps the wine like it's corked and that's cold. And you get nine percent, ninety seven percent usage out of the bottle, right? So that's another huge deal is, is, you know, getting the best usage out of the problems.
So let's just keep going here. The next one is more about what's the customer experience. I described it a little bit already. People come in, they can choose from the different lines. Second part of the experiences, we won't be offering any prepared foods or have a kitchen or cooking, but we will be offering kind of charcuterie accompaniments that go with the different lines. And then lastly, we're also applying for the section fifteen package store license. So people can say, oh, I really love this wine. I'm going to buy this bottle and take it home. So hopefully that, that plays out the way we want so that we compare the wine experience with the retail wine and people can take it off from us. And then the next one is just our downtown location, which we absolutely love. I was super happy that this building became available because I'm a Maynard resident, I've been watching this construction and I love that spot and that building fits in really well with the old historic mill, the brick field. Our design is going to be all modern industrial, so it'll match the downtown area. Lots of traffic there, foot traffic, car traffic, there's parking. Great partnerships with local businesses if we want to host events and have catering with some of the local restaurants downtown. And I think it will draw from lots of surrounding towns and bring more people to downtown, so that's what we're looking for. And then just a little bit of our floor plan, it's very small, so you're not going to be able to see it from here, but in essence, it is, you know, there's, there's a wine glass rack, there's a wine dispenser machines, there's a retail counter. We've got the bathrooms that we need, a little kitchenette, and the rest of it will just be patron seating. We've already started working with the architect, and obviously we'll make sure to get the permits, but we haven't done anything to build it out yet. Probably walked by or been by and seen it's still empty.
Yeah, our floor plan changed.
A little bit, yeah, but it's all, all being compliant with ADA and all of the other town regulations. And then just marketing plan, of course, we need to get the word out. Part of it is just for downtown and put big signs and people will see it, but we also know we need social media. We want to be part of the Maynard Business Alliance and be part of all the local community events that, that we see happening all around town on a regular basis. And then I think the last slide is just a little bit about the staff and then the operating hours. So we've got our two co owners, myself, Michael. I'll be working at full time, there's a little camera sitting here with me, and now we've got some part time staff as well. But we'll see how that goes. If the wine bar is successful, we may need more staff than that, but we're going to start with two, and then we've got what we think are our operating hours. So I think that's the end of our presentation, but I think you take any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Can you scroll back up one slide? Okay. I have a few questions. I'll start. First was about operating hours, so and Tuesday closed.
Can you see that, Chris?
I can. Okay, so those are the proposed operating hours.
Yeah, those are the first proposed operating hours, and because we're not going to be a restaurant, we're not going to be open extended hours. But we may also be open Monday or Tuesday at the special event in the evening or during the day that someone wants to host.
Do you think you may want to change those operating hours at some point in the future?
I mean, it's possible. This is like a test. I think we're going to see if this makes sense, if the retail piece of the business does well and we get that permit, then we probably have more extended hours for people.
What are you allowed to do in town? What's the latest you're allowed to open?
I think it's eleven P M.
Under the liquor, no, the, your liquor license here to go, or your wine license upstairs from there, that would be.
We haven't had it approved by the town, but we're waiting for the state to approve it.
Right, because this seems restrictive for them, and I don't want to.
So I would like hours, if you, if we approve these hours in special permit.
Yeah.
And you wanted to change your hours to increase them, you'd have to come back to us. So what I would like to do is for you guys to think about hours, those hours that may not, may not need to come back to us in six months. Okay.
Yeah.
So think about that.
Like the Wednesday, Monday and Tuesday, I wouldn't pay myself enough.
No, we're, we're.
Or even the Sunday.
So I don't think, there's a board, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we would limit it to closed days. We would only have start and finish times. Right?
Right, although I wondered, do we need to even bother if it's already controlled by liquor license?
Or just let it go?
Liquor license too broad and, you know, we don't want this seven A M. I forgot about the hours.
I think the liquor license regulations say that you can open as early as eleven A M. and stay open until midnight. That's the span of the liquor license.
I, I think that makes sense.
I mean, I'm fine with those hours generally, so.
Yeah.
If you want to keep those for the special.
That's reasonable. Yeah, I don't see us opening in the morning.
I mean, because I could see even if somebody came in and wanted a special event at a Monday night. And said, and then also they're like stuck.
Yeah.
That was what I was thinking about Sundays too, you know, you get some kind of, I don't know, that thing will have later on Sunday.
Right. But I think we could go with eleven to midnight, seven days, and then we decide.
How does the, how does that affect retailers? We're talking about limits of hours. I know that liquor stores can open earlier than that. I don't know. Again, I'll take you in a
Yeah, I think we have to abide by the core license, which is the section twelve on front of pouring license. Versus being just a retail. Well, that's what I think is eleven to midnight.
Deliveries, what do you, what's the point for deliveries?
I think we would, the only deliveries we would be getting would be cases of wine. Probably once a month, but it's hard for us to predict till we see what volume we have. But that's the only thing, only product we're going to have that would.
Trash, I hope that's.
Do you have a location for deliveries onsite?
I mean, you know, where the building's located on Main Street. I think it would have to be around either the front of the building or on the side or the back.
Okay, so you haven't talked to the owner of, where deliveries could occur?
We have not talked to him about that now.
But you suspect it could be on, on Main Street?
I think it would be behind the building. The landlord owns the whole building and I've, they, they already have deliveries coming into the back.
Yes, underground garage.
Has its own drive, and there's a driveway in the back and their own underground garage.
Is there, there's not a pull up there or parking?
I was thinking that, didn't we put in something for the?
I know there was a discussion, but it may not, it may not have made it.
There was a discussion, I think, before we had a before.
But these, these deliveries typically, I mean, for wine, it's, it would be in a smaller truck.
It's a smaller truck, it's not like a semi.
We can't have it on the front edge. That is a very dangerous intersection, not.
No, but there's, there's definitely room in the back.
It doesn't help to have a truck parked there.
We just limited to the rear.
Yeah, I think we're just going to be.
There's plenty of space in the back and it's not like a eight king miller that would be delivering the line. It's like a small truck.
Remember the delivery schedules we've had for the Domino's? We limited it to not late at night, as I recall?
We did.
Or whatever we limited it to?
No, we limited it to times when they were open.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's what happened because we had to change that. Yeah, so you're not going to be getting deliveries when you're not there.
No.
No.
So deliveries during hours of operations?
Yes.
Is that, is that acceptable?
Yes.
And we'll put it in the rear of the building?
Yeah, absolutely, rear building.
Because we do have storage space.
It could also be in the designated meter spaces across the street or on the same side, and the truck could just
Yeah.
park a little ways away and wheel it in. I mean, I don't, I don't think this is a whole lot of stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wouldn't say it has to be behind the building, but it just can't be on the front.
On the main street, unfortunately, it's at that T intersection.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So would it either be a metered space? Because I think the trucks are going to be small enough, they can park in a meter space or behind the building because there's plenty of.
Meter space.
There's spaces behind the building too.
Yeah.
Yeah, meter space or behind building.
Yeah.
Then that way, yeah, that's easy enough.
Question for you, Bill. Is there a way to get currently get from the rear parking lot to this site today? Has that been established yet in the construction? I don't know, all I see is a fence, so.
I don't know. I, it's, we've got to finalize that, that has been done and I, I bet until.
They were issued temporary certificate of occupancy, but that was only for residential. So this is not, this does not have a C O for the business floor as of now, is my understanding.
What is it, the O E?
A certificate of occupancy.
It's not.
So I think they're still waiting.
You know that?
Well, the space is completely empty. There's no way that I could have a certificate of occupancy.
No, no, but I know the.
No, the building itself.
I don't know about the building itself, I just.
And, and I, so.
Retail space does not have.
Very short. And I believe, just I'm looking at the site plans last time I did. I think, I think all of the parking features in the parking lot would need to be signed off on before that T C O is lifted and turned into a C O. Because one of your egresses, I believe, is, there's a second egress in that space that goes to the back, or is that only one egress?
No, we only have the one egress.
It's the front door.
You don't have a back door that's allowed for you guys for your operations?
There's no back.
That's one door.
Oh, there's only one front door, that's it?
Well, there's two front doors.
Yes, there's, it's just the front door.
But it's, but it's a double swing door. It's one door entry.
Yes, correct.
So the space doesn't have a second egress?
Because there was access. There was supposed to be access from the parking lot because there's supposed to be business spaces in the lot.
That's right. That was the whole point.
When there was access. There was something in the back.
This is not necessarily, not your problem for.
This is not. No, you don't have to, they could, with the offices now, next to where they're going, that's where they, that's where it is. That's where the rear, that's where you're talking about the entrance from the back.
The whole point of having designated business parking spaces was so you could park and then attend the business from the back.
You.
So I'll just.
But this is not, this is not.
The landlord told me there are no designated business parking spaces.
Something's not adding up. Well, we should look.
Well, regardless, there wouldn't be enough.
No.
Because there aren't going to be a couple, but there has to be a way to walk from the municipal lot right here and I.
If you can walk through the C V S parking lot, that's what.
No, that wouldn't be.
That's what people say.
Yeah, on the side of her glass office, there's a door that if you go in that door, it'll take you through the new building, because I was in that. And so that little glass office that she just built on the side of that says an entry door, and you go down and that takes you to the garage.
That was meant for the, that was meant for the business.
To be access for businesses.
Right. So. We'll figure it, we'll, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't know about plural businesses. There's only one space for a business.
No, we anticipated one business and, and I think what happened was there's an additional. She made an office out of.
It's the, it's the, it's the business owner's office.
Right, right, yeah. Do we?
So you're not designated any parking spaces at all for this business?
Not specifically dedicated to the business, no.
Right, but you have access to.
You have access to the metered parking, to the municipal parking.
No, but you have access to onsite parking, correct? You just don't have a designated space that says wine bar parking.
I don't know what onsite parking you're referring to. I don't know, I don't believe there is any.
Well, yeah.
According to landlord, he said there are no parking spaces available. We can use the municipal spaces or we can use the metered spaces.
I think she's very foreigner.
Yes, it was. They went down and we, I don't know that we clarified when we reduced it, which ones we were reducing, but we wouldn't have done that.
Yeah. Yeah, I was looking to it. Separate from this here, separate from this here for the most part. So what, what type of waste would you have?
We'll have the wine bottles, which of course we'll take offsite to recycle, and then we'll have some basic, you know, waste from the cheese and the meats and the fruits that we're going to be offering.
And there's a designated recycling location onsite?
No, not on site. We'll have to take it offsite. We're going to have pretty high volume of wine bottles.
So you would, you will not be using the recycling or trash onsite?
We won't be using the recycling onsite. We will be using the dumpster in the back of the building that the landlord has provided.
Okay, so you can use it, okay, but not, not, not recycling the bottles?
No.
Okay.
Do you know when the hours of that dumpster pickup are by chance?
I hope we haven't gotten that far to find out.
I, I live near there and it initially was very early in the morning. And it's quite loud with backup alarms and stuff.
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that, but we did write into the lease that the landlord is allowing us to use the dumpster for our basic, you know, waste from the restaurant or from the landlord.
Other questions from the board?
I just had a question. You mentioned outdoor seating. I, I like the idea. How does that work with when that outdoor area opens up? I mean, is there like an exit? I can't have people probably going out of the sidewalk to go around to that area.
Yeah, again, we haven't gotten that far yet. I think that the promenade is not going to be built out according to the landlord until at least September. So we're not going to worry about it. We also would have to apply for an additional license. We just need to get the two that we've already asked for first.
That's a separate license?
It's a separate license, yeah. So that's something that we'll think about in the future, maybe in springtime, see what the promenade looks like, figure out the licensing, figure out a little.
I like the idea, just want to make sure that.
Yeah, we, we like the idea as well, so it could either be on the front sidewalk and or on the promenade on the side. We'll have to, we'll have to address that in springtime.
Just so you're aware, the development agreement for that property ensures that the promenade space is for public access, so I want to make sure that your landlord is disclosing that correctly to you.
Yes, yeah.
I'm not, I don't know if outdoor seating will be allowed there based on the development agreement with the town.
Yeah, that's fine. Again, we, we haven't built our business plan based on that.
I, I just want to make sure no one's making false promises.
Thank you, I appreciate that. He did tell us that that space would be designated public space.
So, um. This requires two special permits, one for the use as a cocktail lounge, which is required anywhere in town. And it also requires a special permit for doing stuff in the downtown overlay district, getting a special permit in the downtown overlay district. The criteria for that. In order for us to grant it, the criteria have to be met. And I see in your exhibit A, you were proposing to meet one of the possible criteria for the D O D special permit under improvement to the pedestrian experience, but responsible to ensure the sidewalks are clear of snow, ice and debris year round. And I think that's good, in my mind, that would probably meet the criteria. I'm wondering though if you'd be amenable to also not only the front edge of that building, but also that side of the bridge? Because it's kind of no man's land and no business tends to that? So the bridge sidewalk that, that goes on your side of the street?
The bridge sidewalk.
So in front of the glass office.
So you've got the glass office, the promenade, and then the bridge sidewalk in?
Yeah. Because what were you talking about?
I'm talking about the space right in front of the wine bar. So we've got the frontage that's.
Well, that would be discontinuous. There wouldn't be a point in doing that. If, you know, only this section was done and this section wasn't, that'd be at a minimum, the whole front edge.
Yeah, it would be the whole frontage for sure, but the bridge is further down.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
So I mean.
It's a pedestrian connection to that front edge, but you're saying you're only going to do the, the property frontage, not the business.
I think we could agree to do the rest of it if it's going to help the pedestrians in that area.
I'm just looking for something that meets the criteria that is required for me to vote yes.
The language for this is a significant improvement to pedestrian experience. And so that's, that's what's being discussed, that what is, what can be considered significant.
Okay. I mean, fair enough. Again, I think we can, if you tell us what we need to do, we'll do it. I just don't know all the rules, so we have to do from the bridge sidewalk all the way to the end of our frontage. We'll agree to that.
There's, it does get plowed by the town, I'm sure it would be bad. There's, there's other. There's other ways to meet the significant improvement, other applicants have. Um donated to uh the tree fund, so planting trees in the downtown. Uh Bill, have did we set up a s- a a separate fund for downtown improvements?
We do.
So there we could also look at considering um donations to the um downtown improvement fund?
Yeah, absolutely.
Which I yeah can't promise how that money will be spent, but ideas have been about. Uh trash recycle, you know, like trash containers, waste containers, benches, um things of that nature. So those those are ways.
I think that makes absolute sense, like we, you know, we wanna be a good business owner in the community and help to improve the downtown, so.
Or retail.
Or retail spots?
I gotta find out what they are, they're they're ready to sell mine.
So for your awareness, um.
Four.
Our our decision with that property owner for the whole property. Included the the re- the business. Would be allowed up to four spaces.
Four spaces.
Four spaces for parking.
Okay, behind the building?
Yes, in the in the parking spot, in the parking.
Certainly, there's not gonna be enough for customers, fifty three customers, but it's just a couple, it's easy enough, but that's that's okay.
It was meant for owners and staff, isn't it?
Right.
Right.
And maybe a customer.
Okay, that makes sense.
Just to clarify, your reference to behind the building, we're talking about on the property, not the damn lot.
Yes.
Okay. And keep in mind, if the owner is maintaining office space. Then they might have a claim to one of those.
They haven't, they haven't received any permitting for office space. So have no office.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They don't have a, they don't have a. They don't have a business permit, a business permit for that space. So they're not allowed to have an office space there.
Well, it 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 wouldn't come through my office if they did.
Yeah, but they don't.
Okay.
So.
We're not yet, yeah.
Another thing to put on your list.
It's it's an incomplete site.
Right, and and it's okay to use the space um at, because it's not, it's it's not under a CO then, right? So if it's helping with construction, that's one thing. But uh once it's CO'd, I don't see how. I don't see how you can maintain an office space. I don't think.
No, you don't, yeah, I don't know why they need to. Hey, that's more of a building.
Yes.
Commission.
Yes, probably. Um okay, but for four spaces for retail was what for the.
That's what I have on the last plan, I looked at, I I double checked, but that's, I we wouldn't knock that off.
I, no, I agree, we wouldn't have done that.
But I don't know who we designated. That I don't know, cause we're.
I don't think we designated them.
We probably did, no. But I'll I'll count, I'll do a count. Yeah.
Other questions on board?
I'm just curious what options are for acting on this request. If some of the site elements aren't in place yet, right?
Well, that that's a, that's a good question, um the site, it's not complete, now, when do you plan to open? When do you think you really?
Wouldn't be till, I'm sorry.
Number probably.
It would have to be after the full parking lot is available, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be, cause the site's still being, you know, obviously.
NCO.
Right, well, I I don't know about you, I trust you on a PCO, I don't know how that works, but.
I don't see how we can.
If anything, we need a, we need the 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 occupancy for the entire building before we can operate.
The owner is only under a temporary CO, which was designated by the building commissioner for residential use. So I don't even know if a business is allowed to operate in there yet.
Gotcha.
Until the whole building has a proper CO.
Yeah.
That'd be something you wanna plug it with the building commissioner on, but but.
But that's that has nothing to do with the special permit.
You're right, right, we're we're from the zoning standpoint. But they Chris is right, there may be, you know, some, there's some.
But I don't see how we can issue special permitting for something that's not allowed to have it occupied yet. Maybe would we condition it?
You just condition.
Condition it for once.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we do that.
Yeah, condition one CO.
Yeah, effectively, we do that when it's being built, so.
Yeah.
But we have to be a little bit specific in this.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't open for business as a CO.
Right.
I mean, they're gonna, I'm sure, you know, working their plans.
Yeah.
But do we know if the CO would include? Parking lot or be asking an accent?
That's that's what I'm concerned about too. The whole point was to have the parking lot established, to have a second entry. So that you can, for parking lot, you can access the business. And and don't businesses need multiple entries?
I know architects lift it down.
Yeah.
Only if it's over a certain amount of.
Or one hundred. I mean, I think I think I think if the parking lot was there and there was a way. It's a short walk around to the front door, that's fine, even if it couldn't come directly in the back door. But. Has to be ability to do that, and there has to be ability to get from the municipal lot to that front edge without going through CBS.
Yeah. Cause that's the way it was.
He does have that access, like I said, he has access, it's just the door comes out, doesn't come, there's no access from the spot that we're in. But the his his office outside has that access door there, so it dumps you out on to technically on to that street right there in the front, so. I don't know if that fulfills his.
It's not the front street entirely, but like right the back parking lot.
Yeah, but that's where it goes from, it goes from that front, from that side office, putting that parking on and.
Yeah, I'll go to the back.
Through the CBS or something.
Like a really small like um.
Yeah.
Hallway.
Like an outdoor hallway thing between the promenade and the building.
All right, oh, okay.
Yeah, and don't forget the promenade was meant to be connection points to the bike path and the back parking lot too.
Yes.
I mean.
At least I wish, yeah.
Yeah, I I don't. It sounds like everything's September. Sounds pretty much like, cause they they definitely do you promenade, it's gonna be completed, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I I think if it just do, you know. Effective date is when the CO is issued. That would take care of it. The so far, it's the four spots, I think Bill makes a good point there, I don't I don't believe we designated, I think we, that was one of the things we had to monkey around with to get. When they did the amendment for the garage, I think.
I also think that was the handicap parking location.
A what?
The handicap parking location. Was by that back door.
Yeah, it was designed that way.
We move that?
No, it's near the back door, the handicap parking location.
Right, so the handicap parking location for this business would be.
Yeah.
Near where that back door is, although you probably still get to the business without going through that back door, that spot is gonna still be where it was supposed to.
That's important for accessibility, right, we want people that need the handicap spot to access your business.
Well, Jeremy may have the moves, oh, here, here's the handicap spot.
Yeah, see? Yeah, that was the whole point, you put a handicap spot there so that you can access.
But here's the entrance that you're talking about here.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, he did have a wall here.
Yeah.
That's not a wall, is it?
Yeah, there's there's a wall there. It's actually, it's it's not quite straight across, it kind of goes in a little bit, she took a little bit of the space to put her office there.
Well, we we don't have anything to do with internal walls in the building, that's not relevant.
But that's, yeah, that's the entrance I was talking about.
But that door right there where your mouse is, Bill, that was meant for the the that front business office, the front business, the whole thing was supposed to be front business.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that handicap parking spaces connect was to connect to that the the whole front business.
But I I can see if there's a hand, if there's a. Handicap accessible route from that parking space to that front door. I think that would be okay.
And.
From this?
It might be compliant, is that's what you mean?
Yeah.
Am I there, Bill?
Yeah.
Exactly. Or by the door and around.
Look me up.
That was wonderful, nice, nice.
Good.
Okay, so big picture um. Big Bill, do. Do the these items need to be reviewed and worked out before we issue a special permit, or is there? Or can we go ahead with?
I I think it's made a contention on the CO. I don't feel there's any reason not to build a special pot, I think it'll probably, I think the idea of having it will help them as a um. For some of the things they're gonna need to do, and if we, if our concern is ensuring that. You know, everything's completed to standards, we're just putting, we get CO.
So we have.
And then with the con- what were the condi- what were the conditions you guys have wanted?
Um well, you had a condition that this doesn't impact a special permit for the property.
Right, but we were talking about for the, I meant for the um.
Clearing the sidewalk.
Clearing sidewalk from the to the bridge. To the tree pond.
And donating to downtown improvements, I forgot what the fund is called.
It could be either or. Your fault.
I'd rather donate, because I'm not gonna clearing sidewalks.
So we, is that fund set up the?
Yeah, set up the downtown handsome fund and um all the mess administration, people can apply for it or. We use it as uh for public amenities.
So similar businesses with square footage would be Domino's and a few others, do you remember the 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 amount they donated?
Domino's were just a um.
Wasn't that much, a couple grand?
Yeah, it was.
I can look it up.
If you could, um I would, you know, I'd like to stay consistent, Bill, plus. I I think that the most recent special permit we issued that had a donation was, I think, two thousand dollars from Domino's, so that's the kind of scale.
Yeah.
Yeah, which it's a similar size, and there's no rules necessarily, but I'm just. Trying trying to make it equitable, and I want I want one business to do twenty K and another to do none.
We use it for trees, we use it for benches or furniture.
Absolutely.
Keep in mind, do we require it before or after the business opens?
We've changed that.
It is two thousand. We give them time to.
We put it as CO.
Or is it part of the startup cost?
Bill, it was two, it was two thousand.
Okay.
It was, I'm sorry.
It was two thousand for Domino's.
Man, you're quick. And that was Domino's and that was uh I I think it's CO, right?
That probably was. Um I I think typically.
He already gave it, I mean, he gave it to us, he must have been when he opened.
You better have it, he's opening.
Yeah, no, no, he did, cause we used, it's it's um. I think that's, is that the only one for tree lots, I don't know. But yeah.
So then the the condition would be that sidewalks in front of the building are cleared, as you discussed, and a two thousand dollar donation to the downtown.
We say within three months of opening for the business for Domino's.
I think we can do the same here.
In what?
That's great.
Within three months of opening.
Three months of opening?
Yeah. Benefits need, cause I live in the town too.
Yeah, and if we make you do it, we make it, we're gonna make everyone else that comes through do it too.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We'll be good neighbors.
We know that, we're not. We're not, we're not worried about that.
My sister lives here.
My own way, so let me ride my bike for it, that's just nice.
Oh my, I think we were talking about the condition on no deliveries along the um. Main Street frontage.
Yeah.
Of deliveries in back, which is.
Deliveries in the back or on meter spaces, is what I have.
I just wanna say no deliveries on the front.
Is that what you want?
Yeah.
No deliveries in front?
On Main Street.
Along the Main Street frontage.
No deliveries on Main Street?
No, not on Main Street. Main Street frontage, like at the T intersection.
Yeah.
Cause they could park in front of John's, I suppose.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. The frontage of the building, no deliveries on the frontage of Main Street.
That's what I said, but I put meter spaces only. This on Main Street, we're simplifying.
Good.
Okay, we wanna do something with hours?
Hours, eleven AM to twelve AM, no, that's right. I know it sounds weird, it's eleven AM to twelve AM.
And it goes seven days.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like that, I would I would hate for you guys to get, be be back here in. Five minutes.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I I think I'm stuck on this eleven AM to twelve AM, it makes no sense. We need to switch to military.
I lived in Europe for a few years, military time is a lot easier.
Works better.
Definitely only open for one hour, so it's like, that's it's only open for one hour.
Yeah. Big glass of wine.
And would they um. Would it be conditional on the completion of the onsite parking lot or?
I don't know.
Handicap, the handicap parking anyways?
That's what I'm, I'm, so I'm trying to wrap my head around.
And well, the question is. Connection, a pedestrian connection to the lot.
I mean, certificate of occupancy would need that, no?
I believe so.
We don't know that. It didn't need it for the temporary.
But that's not the only lot people could park in, I mean, if they could park in the street, you know, spaces and. Main Street or.
That's true, but this site was supposed to be hooked to the main, have a pedestrian connection to the main, the parking lot, municipal lot.
I don't know how to handle that, cause I do want that handicap parking space tied to the business, that's the, that was the whole point. Of the handicap parking space.
Well, I don't think it tied to the business, you're gonna require it to be, I don't think it tied to. Any handicaps parked 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 to a business.
Yeah, that's fair.
But. I still think there needs to be a safe pedestrian connection to the municipal lot. Cause that was the whole point of the site.
No, no, I understand, but the the C, the question is. Are you you're saying, could they get a CO prior to the completion?
Are are we talking about things that are that are that are part of the special permit for the building, not this special permit, right? Right? Our our concerns are for the building and property special permit, not for the use special permit.
Well.
Right?
I mean, it's, this is gonna be subordinate.
Right.
To the overall special permit, so the fate of, I mean, whatever happens for that, is, you know, whatever, that special permit is gonna control because they're. So.
See, I'm a little concerned that this project might be caught up. With delays in completion of the promenade.
Right, right.
But in my mind. Even if the promenade wasn't finished, if they can figure out a way to. Connect a temporary connection from the parking, their parking lot to municipal parking lot. That would be fine, I wouldn't wanna hold up this operation.
How could we word that?
Cause they were working on, I don't know, they're railing the promenade.
Right, right, no, I see, it's fine, so I before, well, if we said open and.
I just want a safe pedestrian connection.
Between the.
The municipal parking lot and.
Yeah.
This site. And in my mind, I think who's walking through that. Site parking lot is fine, cause it's low turnover and stuff, so.
See, I I I don't know. If the final CO would be granted before that is done, I can't imagine it would be, but I don't know, so maybe we can word it so that. The building commissioner um. Shall uh it, prior to opening. The building commissioner um. Approve safe pedestrian access from the route, from the municipal park, municipal parking lot to the.
He's gonna have questions with that.
Yeah, but I don't think that is legally part of the CO necessarily.
No, it may not be, as I'm saying, we may get a, uh they get a. Well, I mean, we could say we go.
I think I think we could put something in this. This special permit, just perhaps it's redundant, but perhaps it's not.
But how would you root it, or like what? I mean, we could, we could also say, you know.
It's contingent on providing onsite accessible, handicap accessible parking and. An onsite pedestrian connection to the municipal parking lot. Now they do that, whether it's permanent or temporary, whatever, as long as it works, then these people should be able to do what they're doing and. If we're still.
I think that.
Doing, playing with the promenade. Don't wanna hold this up.
Right, no, I think that's a good point. We we could, yeah, I think we do that. We could also say, you know, that that um. Well, I don't know. You guys agree with that? I I think that.
Will will the business owner be notified they need to do that? Because I don't think they are aware.
You don't think they what?
I don't think they are aware or they're saying they're not aware in way of the requirement that need to be articulated.
Oh, no, they're not. They might be aware of that.
So that's, I mean, that's my concern. If they're not aware, they have to do it and we're gonna wait around for them to do it.
Well, the other option is to wait for them to finish the promenade. And finish the entire site. Wouldn't, we wanna make sure. You know. Who knows, that might be sooner, might not be soon.
Right.
So I'm trying to figure out a way that, you know, there's a um temporary now option if the promenade is.
There also are now, we are having the applicant next in two weeks. Um, the, I'm sorry, one for the owner, you know, two weeks for modification.
Major minor determination.
Yeah, and um, so. Well, you could also say, and and you could say um, the the this, the effective date of this is when. The, if we said the property receives final C uh sign off, that's what Bill's saying, then you're gonna get stuck. If the promenade is not quite done.
Yeah, I don't wanna hold their breath on the promenade. I don't wanna hold these guys up.
Right, but the CEO, if we did the CEO, I don't know if it includes. Like what you're saying.
I don't know if CEO includes prominence.
Could the. Could a another temporary CEO. Be issued for this amount of promenade?
I don't know.
I don't know that either. That's a building commissioner item.
Well, I if if we if we went with the condition that we just wrote and um. You're uncomfortable with that, with the.
The only reason I'm uncomfortable is my experience so far is if the building owner isn't told that he has to do that, I mean, we could be sitting here next year waiting for this to happen. Right, if that's not a condition that he's becomes aware of for.
Or maybe that's aware of.
That was a condition, so.
According to him so far. He's never disclosed any of his requirements about getting his own occupancy, you know, certificate of occupancy, the promenade is connected to it. Never told us there was no parking, so I'm a little bit worried about us having to rely on him to.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I get that.
Um, maybe, maybe then the thing to do. It's just, well, if you just hide up opening until there's a safe pedestrian connection to business.
I mean. But like she's saying, how how do we like, do we need to tell?
Well.
McDonald that.
Well, safe con- uh, safe connection to business, we're saying for the municipal lot is what we're thinking, right?
It it's this, this is a hard thing to word too, like, I I think we could word accessible route. On site to the handicap parking space. I think that's pretty easy to word and make to, it's simple, right? But like, access to the. Uh, safe passage of access to municipal parking lot, like, that could be, you could. You could walk west down Main Street, connect up to the bike path, walk along the bike path to get there, then it's circuitous, but that's still.
Same reality.
Right, but you know, it's like, I don't know how to word it. So you can, it's already there.
I mean, people don't park by Family Deli or.
Right, but but um, yeah, but or you walk, you walk on down up Nation Street and circumvent to the parking lot. That way, that's safe and accessible already.
Yeah, maybe we should, maybe we don't work.
So maybe, maybe, I don't know. I don't, I don't wanna tie it. Part of me thinks that this is for the larger special permit.
I don't want more people walking through. CBS.
Well, maybe.
Bad situation, that's gonna get really bad someday.
Yeah. Um. And I don't know how to limit people doing that through a special permit either, so.
They're still going to do it regardless.
Yeah, so so that that that's that holds it on what our concern is. We don't wanna issue special permit and then people will be like, oh, we'll just walk through the CBS parking lot, that's private property. Right, and we're not supposed to.
Yeah.
But, you know, not supposed to.
But why are we, you you're right, I agree, but if there's if there's no CEO to get through the site from the municipal lot. And for safety reasons. And I mean, not to take this the wrong way, but why do we care? They could park on Main Street until it gets open.
Yeah.
Why are why are we making it our problem? Then we wanna get them open, the se- the security of the. The the construction site is is paramount, because if there was something, you know, we wouldn't want somebody to go through there and get hurt. So we're saying you can't park in. Parking lot, you got all Main Street parking and it's maybe a pain.
Yeah, I I like the part, I like access to the parking space, the handicap parking space, that makes sense to me.
Um, that's true too.
Right, that makes sense, because that's, that's about pure access.
Now, we, and a handicap spot, the nearest one would be otherwise like Main Street.
Pretty far away.
The new one, oh, they put the new one, new ones going in at uh.
Right next to our office. Yeah.
Yeah.
But that was.
There is?
Yeah.
No, I'm not talking about the one, not that 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 one on private property, we just have a public one. Put in, I just feel I'm gonna go in at um, out front of the bean.
But that's not really a handicap space, that's just a sign that says.
That's true. That's true.
The same thing.
Um, I'm inclined to take the whole access thing to the special, to larger special permit. Though I don't know what you think, but.
What do you mean by that, Chris?
Um.
Well, gonna have, gotta have the handicap spot.
I don't, I don't wanna tie this special permit down with access, that access item to the back municipal lot. I think that's the item for the larger special permit.
Yeah.
But that parking, that that, that ADA compliant parking spot, handicap spot was meant for the business.
Yeah.
So I was there, yeah.
So we should, we should put that in special permit that that's accessible for the business.
Okay, so just put the, we put it to safe uh occupancy.
And accessible and compliant access to the handicap parking spot on site.
Okay, but not to the.
Handicap.
Well, I guess it'd be, it would be one of the underground ones too, that we are, but I don't know how we would.
Well, I think the service level is the point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there accessible access from the garage handicap spot to business?
I don't know, and it wasn't meant to. That's pretty, there was some steep ramps and I think there's an elevator in some elevator.
There was elevator, that's right, yeah.
So that's at a, that that parking down there is at a lower elevation.
Right.
And I don't know if that elevator goes to that level.
Yeah, I don't think it's possible.
So you have to stipulate surface lot then?
Yeah.
So you have to stipulate surface lot?
Yeah.
How about the elevator, available business, handywell, heavy wine.
Really would, yeah. So there's a few things that if we could go back in time and tell the landlord to do differently.
I I think we encourage, I think we encouraged him to have that elevator stop at every Florida.
The floor's changed.
I mean, the way he built it, there's a completely, um, this absolute wall between, like literal and figurative. Between the retail and all the residences in the garage. It's just completely separate.
Um, so do you have any heartburn if we? Um, ha- have the special permit say that access to that parking handicap space needs to be accessible?
No, but that means tomorrow I'm gonna be telling the landlord, you better get that done. You know, because I think honestly, I'm just being honest in this room, like, I don't think this guy plans to do most of the stuff that you guys have told him he needs to do. Um, just basically, he's told us. So now that I understand that there there were more requirements, he's not needing them. I mean, some of them. I'm just not sure he's gonna do.
Well.
But I will, I will definitely explain to him that we had this hearing and there are some things that for us to be able to open this business, he's gonna have to.
Yeah, for an open, he's gonna have to pass thirsty bills.
That's not my responsibility. I just want him to do what I need him to do.
Sure. Okay, so it would be uh, the donation to the downtown fund.
Enhancement fund.
Enhancement fund.
After your thirty-three months of opening.
And then after three months of opening, um. Clearing, keeping clean the sidewalk in front of the building frontage. Uh, no deliveries on the frontage of along Main Street, hours eleven AM to twelve AM midnight. Um, accessible and compliant access to the handicap space surface slot spot on site.
Yeah.
And those were the conditions.
Okay, excellent.
We have, uh, we do a few final.
Yes, so we will open it up for public comments, um. Noting builders, no members of the public in the room tonight. Did I have that correct?
No.
Um, we'll open, we'll take any public comments that are online. If uh, if anyone willing to enter a public comment, please use the raise hand feature or. Turn on your video and raise your hand.
We have one person. Tracy, would you like to come up? You have any comments?
No additional comment, thanks.
Uh, one note, uh, you said that we'll be using argon gas. Uh, do you have argon compressed gas cylinders stored on site?
They'll be small. I mean, argon gas compressed cylinders stored on site.
Um, not for the special permit, can you just run that through the fire department so they are aware?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a safety item, compressed gas, so they like to know about those things.
Absolutely.
Um, any further comments, questions from the board? Okay, any concerns, Bill?
Well, this part of the site.
Okay. I'm just asking before we close if you wanted to, if you needed anything else.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, uh, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor to close the hearing, please raise your hand. It's four zero, close the hearing. Any further discussion? Oh, do I have to make a motion unless you wanna?
Yeah.
For sure? Okay.
I think it's written on chat.
He's he's talking about the conditions I wrote down.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can run, I can run through them.
No, that's okay, um. I will make a motion to find that the application meets the criteria for special permit as described in section ten point four of the zoning bylaws. I will also, this motion also finds that the application meets the criteria of the DOD special permit. As described in section nine point four, four point six of the zoning bylaws. Um. I'll make a motion to uh approve the special permit to allow a cocktail lounge use. Wine bar in the DOD at one fifteen Main Street. Um, and then the following uh, conditions will apply. Uh, this decision uh, will not impact. Um, the special permit issued for the property at one fifteen Main Street. Uh, issued to Mc- McDonald Development. Did I get that right, Bill?
Yes.
Uh, condition two, um, a donation of two thousand dollars will be. Uh, issued to the, what is it called? The?
Downtown enhancement fund.
To the downtown enhancement fund.
Administered by OMS.
Administered by the Office of Municipal Services here in Maynard, that's two thousand dollars. Um, to be donated uh, within three months of opening. Um. Condition three, the sidewalks on the building frontage along Main Street will will be cleared. And kept clean and maintained by the applicant, particularly in uh, for debris and snow removal. Condition four, uh, no deliveries will be allowed on the Main Street frontage of the building. Condition five, the hours of operation will be allowed, um. All days of the week, eleven AM to twelve AM midnight. And condition six, uh, the, the. The, there will be, um, the business will have. An accessible and compliant access to the handicap space surface lot that is located on site. And shown on the special permit for the one fifteen Main Street. Decision issued to McDonald Development.
Approved plan, right.
Approved plans. Those are the six conditions. Okay, did I do all right? Yeah, we, I'm heading on to like, good. Um, but I do need a second.
Uh, second.
Second, I got it.
Yeah, um, all in favor to issue the decision, please raise your hand. That's four zero to issue the special permit as noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate that. We we got some information.
What we're doing, I think it'll be good, um, I will draft the decision, take main program, that will be publicly. We'll get that going on the books and and there's a sure, a period of funding phase. I'll put for you, you'll get a copy of that. When I send you the copy of the decision for the clerk, there's instructions on it, I'll send you a copy of the plan as well.
Okay.
It'd be nice for you to ask.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, you appreciate it, thank you.
I come and talk to you again.
Anything inside, best way to do it is anything inside related, building related, outside related.
Okay, perfect.
Well, you can stop on this, I wouldn't.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Alright, yeah, we're excited. Thanks for uh, work, you're a businessman.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, you guys look good, we need moods.
We just have April play too, alright?
Behind us.
But I have a comment on page two.
Okay.
Um, the last paragraph on the. Before the uh, motion to close the hearing. Talks about, there was a discussion of the fifteen car maximum properties of that maximums of seventy-six A and B. I think it's just for seventy-six B. Not the two.
Hi, guys.
Oh.
Hey, you're time for minutes.
N P O M D updates.
Oh, yeah. That fifteen car is not, it's just this piece of it. Seventy-six A is the front of the building, right?
What's that now?
The paragraph says fifteen car maximum at the property that maximums for seventy-six A and seventy-six B, the minutes say. But that fifteen cars actually just for seventy-six.
That's for seventy-six B.
Right, but the minutes say it's also for A.
Oh, oh, I see what you're talking about. Yeah, yeah, I'm reading one, okay. The amount, yeah, that's right, for seventy-six, yeah, that's gotta be amended. For seventy-six B, it's just B. And I went today and they had to bury it or something. I went on site. We're.
They're also parking on town property.
They're on property and and they're not, yes. The the applicants have both done what they're supposed to. That's.
They're parking on top property.
That's not the applicant.
Seventy-six A is.
Is it?
The front lot is.
Um, by the one by the sign?
Yeah.
Well.
It's on the other side of the sign.
You're sure it's seventy-six?
It wasn't like a week ago and then it was again.
And I was out there this morning, I went there.
And next to the signs, town property too.
It's it's.
It's the edge of the building.
The.
We have a poor concrete wall.
Yeah, and there was, I have, there is a, um, the survey is being redone, I think. On Town Spark, but but I, yes, we'll keep on top of that, Bill. But I I was out there this morning, they were. I went, that's where I started this morning. But I called you, I was there. Yeah, when I, I went, when I called you this morning, I was out there, that's why I was, I was doing my recon, had my little camouflage on. I can't even be in the room.
Nice.
Okay, but yes, you're right, I made that change, Bill.
So the. The less, there's a discussion of fifteen car maximum of the property maximums for seventy-six A and V.
Isn't B suffered than seventy six and seventy six A?
That's correct. It's seventy six B with fifteen car maximum. Seventy six B is um just the denmark.
I don't, didn't. They're not.
We shouldn't be saying the maximum is for seventy sixteen A and B. That's not, that can't be correct, right?
Right, we request, we we struck that.
Is that what we're just talking about?
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought we were talking about part further up. I bet. Oh, did it say it again up there?
I just never just me. I'll stop talking.
Yeah, maximum is for seventy six B.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, sorry.
Okay.
Bill, I got one comment. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you this, and you can have my note.
Okay.
It's when I asked Mr. Both Burgani to leave the meeting.
Yes.
And I just want on record that I issued him a formal warning. Further disruptions occurred and then I executed.
Okay, right, so you can just have that. Alright.
But I, you know, I wanted to clear, like.
No, absolutely.
Issued him a formal warning. Further disruptions occurred.
Uh, I heard it.
Yep.
It's on tape.
I know. So those are the rules.
Those are the rules.
The rules are, you need, you should, you need to be issuing warnings, formal warnings.
You did.
And after the formal warning, you're you're in your, within your right to.
True. And then. What were we supposed to do? Were you with that one, Jeff, or was that when you were out?
No, I wasn't here, but then when I heard what happened, I did, did watch some video, actually.
Yeah, you know. It's gotten more views than anything.
Do you really keep count?
Hmm?
Do you really watch the counts?
Well, there are YouTube. It says.
Actually, it does every morning. You pull, you pull up the YouTube channel of all the planning board meetings, if anybody else has watched that new one.
There you have to go and. We get more than other committees, that's all I care about.
Oh.
Look at the shoes that walk.
We could put these on TikTok then, instead of YouTube.
I don't understand TikTok.
I don't, I just figured out YouTube, come on, man. It's right, they're up there.
Yeah, we can monetize these meetings.
All right, are there, are there, any other changes to the minutes for these?
Can I make a, can I make a motion to uh? Prove the minutes of April twenty two as amended?
Second. Oh, in favor to approve the minutes as amended, do you disagree? Let's.
Now we can go work.
Four zero. Are you here? I can't, I don't even know.
I mean, I don't.
I don't think, I don't think you know, Pierre.
You need to sign in now.
You're on camera.
So. Plan update? Well, first of all, next meeting is gonna be, I got, I I apologize what we got stacked. So um we've we've got. The MOD, which we could always continue for one meeting, we've got um. One fifteen main, by a new minor major. We've got Sugarloaf, which is basically a renewal of the exit. Sugarloaf, is it sugar? Sugarloaf is the uh renewal of their expired special permit, there's no changes there. We've got um. Oh, let's see, one coming in. And then another one.
I don't know.
Yeah.
About the fire station?
No, fire station is the the first meeting in in July. Um. Let me just look. Get it wrong. Something.
Round the meeting.
More involved than I anticipated.
Yeah, right?
As I walked in, that was the one, that was that who was walking out, said, well, that was unexpected. I was like, ooh.
Um there's some differences between. Uh when they're being told and what the site conditions should have been based on the special permit.
Uh, okay.
For the property.
Yeah.
So it goes.
We need a presentation for the next meeting on the PMOD. Right? This is for the zoning?
No, it's a map amendment for the PMOD and so on. That's a map. Yeah, we're we're, well, when we do the PMOD, remember we have to amend the map, it's a separate from. We have to do, we have to approve all map change.
Right, we're doing F. Is that what you mean?
What are we doing?
Are you talking about F or are you talking about? Slicing off part of?
No, we're doing the PMOD tax that we have, but we have the map of the company, is it?
Yep.
And they're separate, they're separate. I had, so we vote on them separate.
Well, what's the here? Oh, this is not a hearing, this is a. This is gonna be before hearing?
They're both gonna be hearings, yeah.
He's asking, wh- what are we talking about next meeting for the PMOD?
And does there need to be a presentation?
Yeah, yeah, and yeah.
Hey, on what? He would.
Or the map.
They'll devote, oh, oh, right, just start with what we did, yeah.
Alright, I can't remember. So if you could just give me whatever the legal ad said, then I could put together a presentation.
You got it.
So, uh Bill, you have that presentation ready?
Yeah, right, yeah. Been in that situation once.
Yeah, my sock up inside. It's nice to be over here. And um, yeah, I thought it was more than it was. I I that, I I saw there was four, that's the other one. Yeah, so that's good. Okay, uh grants, we've got four in, told you that, I think I told, told you guys we have four in. We got the housing production plan and we got the um. The pedestrian improvements for uh requests for full engineering plans for the powder mill. Uh. Or we got a request for um. The um ADA. Self evaluation transition plan. And we put, I put one in for Naylor Court for finalizing a cohesive master plan of that whole area.
Oh, fun.
Um, that's it. Secondly, I um.
Wait, hold on, who's? Where'd that come from?
We'll send it working out for.
Oh, good for you. Just you?
Um, no, I I'm gonna use the previous studies from. Um, I wrote as sort of, I I. There's been fooling around with different names for that area. And so right now they're calling it Nail and Court Commons, you know?
It's better than the base in the project.
Face it. So I I just put it together with everything from outreach to a plan that takes into account everything that we've done. So far, because we have two studies, we have the Urban Land Institute study, twenty twenty one, we had the uh. The uh sort of, I won't call it the dumpster plan, but kind of the dumpster. Plan with the circulation that was done in uh twenty twenty two. I wanna use this, build on what we. I put it in the scopeal work for the grant, build on what we learned. From public input at that point. And the idea being that we would have a complete. Schmorgasbord of improvements we could use between Nail or Court. Veterans and Wild Park. As little sub projects in there, so what we can do, so that's what I wanna do. So if we have, also we have funding for transit stops. We say, okay, we wanna put a a shelter here, or if we have funding for whatever, you know, we could just kinda like we do with with the. With the um Veterans and Wild Parks, that's the goal.
If we wanted bocce courts instead of parking spaces.
You do.
That decided.
Ran on, ran on. Or what's the other one? What's the other one that we're explaining? Pickle, pickleball?
No, pickleball.
Is that the other one we replaced?
Yes, that's too many. Somebody likes pickleball.
Nobody, nobody.
Really?
I can't stand it.
Don't know what makes me mad watching pickleball. It's a little baby tennis, right?
Baby tennis, yes. We don't need it, we already have a setup for it over at Alumni Field, it's fine.
Um, we need bocce courts, though.
Yes.
Bocce courts, hundred percent. Whatever you got, well, it's the same, so everybody will have an opportunity, and I wanna get.
On the problem here.
But here's, the thing is, I want to get.
Yeah.
Yeah. With that, with that exercise, I would like to get the community involved, the entire community, not just the area business, we get everybody. That's gonna use it down there, it's gonna be a community space, so. Um.
So the purpose of the study is to?
It's not a study, this is a, a, a um, this is preparation of a, what I call the, an action plan.
Action plan.
And but I wanna make it so that it's all little components, so you don't have to do everything at once.
Got it.
Yeah. And uh so that we can put into petting zoo one day. Or whatever, you know, bocce courts or. New trees or.
It's high valued space and we use it to have empty parking spaces mostly, right? So, I mean, I know we need parking, but it's pretty high valued space.
Mm-hmm. Um.
Can we bring back the parking garage? Cause that had a lot of parking in it.
What happened to the parking commission?
You don't need a parking garage, right?
They're still there.
Yeah, we listen. Next to the.
Um, I think it's um, I think there were, more or less, Steve is is. Is the parking commission?
It was.
He's out with baby duty today.
With V H B project twenty four.
Really?
Here we go, wicked low now.
And then I, we decided.
And well, if you're there, it's kind of near.
Parking structure was?
We had a parking garage.
No, I, I, I do, yeah.
If if you. Near, near Memorial Park, there's this gigantic ramp, you know the ramp?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's filling in the, partly from the void of where the parking garage was, it was sitting in that. Co- that corner of the parking lot.
That was the end.
So the kind of the north west corner.
Was it ever safe and like, since you, you've been here fourteen years, right?
Oh god, don't say it like that.
Was it open when you were here?
It it basically shut down when we moved in. I forget the exact timing.
I mean, we've been here thirteen years and I think it was still in operation when we moved here, like barely.
Yeah.
I've been here eleven, I've never seen, I never saw it.
Yeah.
I never saw the garage, period.
I think it was a little. Two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and probably.
It just fell down one day?
Taken down.
No, they just took it down.
No, I mean, it started, it was, the integrity was.
No, I think it was fine, cause it was a single open level deck that it all washed with natural rain, nothing, it wasn't a rebar problem, nothing.
It was pre-stressed, it was pre-stressed, the.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the joints gone and leaked down a little, but so what, it was raining. Oh, it was fine. I just didn't like it.
I never had the pleasure of seeing the garage.
Yeah. I'm not actually.
I don't. Wasn't that impressive? Um, and lastly, uh, this is strategic. Planning for um. Our master plan update, which we we would like to start, we outreach at the end of the summer. And Zoe's gonna lead that effort. And um that'd be a good one. A lot, we've accomplished awful lot in our master plan.
When's, when's the, when's our update kind of due?
They, they, well, we don't.
Well, what are we talking about? We were talking about what, two thousand?
Twenty six.
Twenty six?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I want to hear up for it, I wanna start, we wanna start getting, beating the bushes for people to, you know, to get some good people involved.
We have a recent scorecard?
So exactly, Bill and I first, we're talking first step is to get it, get it status check. On the, on master plan goals from all groups and departments.
Didn't we have a master plan implementation committee?
Yeah.
Do we still?
You mean the what's next committee?
Well, they were renamed after that, no, we, that was kind of a. Yeah, we did, but we have not had, we need to go.
I think they're basically defunct, right? They don't.
They're defunct.
Yeah, they haven't been in a long time.
And um. But uh looking through the. The goals, you know, we've done a heck of a lot, I mean, it had stuff that you would like, uh. I mean, a lot of we had done for a long time, introduced an ADU by, well. What's, what'd you watch it?
Oh, he's just.
Looking at the time on Google Maps here.
This someone's gonna cost me my job, what are you looking at over there?
No, I, it's.
The parking.
It's gonna come down.
That's why it has that sheer wall.
Yeah, I was, I was curious why it was there, but I figured.
What is that picture of the wall?
For the uh.
Picture of the rock, that was the direction. Oh, I can't see much. Um. I'll be damned.
It was having to be used, clearly. What? Slide this photo. Well, there were a lot, there was a, they enforce the timelines, my thanks, that was the, that was the employee.
And that is all I have.
So PMOD stuff coming up from the.
PMOD, my suggestion, the, I order, why don't I order it so the PMOD stuff is last. So if we wanna continue, we can continue.
Then uh master plan is our authority, or it's our.
That one is us.
It's our document, right? Housing production plan, who who's final approval on that?
Select board and I think it's both of us.
I think it's both of us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Gotta get the ramp first.
Right. So I'm I'm just putting in everyone said that these are kind of the big.
Yeah, I kinda.
Picture, those are the things, PMOD.
Yeah.
Master plan.
Well.
Production plan.
There's two other plans that we're doing it. I got Zoe. Is working on finishing the open space and rec, what's needs updated. And the reason we need that for certain grants and I. Helping out the uh ADA um. Committee. With the transition plan, which we need as well.
That's what the, that's the town administrator plan and select board plan, that right?
Yeah. Yeah, but, yeah.
And the, what about the open space and rec plan, is that, um, that a planning board plan?
Conscom.
Conscom plan, okay.
Yeah.
Um Natalie is getting reapproved at select board, right, in July?
Yes.
Yeah, is anyone else up for?
Reimbursement?
Reimbursement? You two are too new, I don't think you guys would be.
Those, those three. Chris took, one of you guys take over some of these?
I think I did it.
I'll look it up.
I, well. I read them recently. I was the only one in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
There's not, okay. By the five year plan, even on five years, right, yeah. Say, did they approve those renewals last, last meeting?
I think so.
What rules?
The the changes.
They approved their renew, their renewals.
No, they haven't yet.
Oh, I got renewed for.
July first and they are doing it at their next meeting.
Oh, okay.
I was renewed for the M F P six, that was the only one that was launched on.
Or anything else?
No, my question about fire station.
Which the new rule?
Uh old, you want comments on the stuff that was sent out? Or you wanna wait till they hear?
Oh, no, no, I have my comments if they can be. Um I sent you guys comments tonight from the engineer, town engineer.
I did?
Yeah, I want to check, get them to send back to me and I'll send them to their engineer. I'd like to get as much of that ahead. As we could. I asked them to work offline as much as they can for stuff that's uh. You know, it it's not in the um. Agreement.
And do we have? That, will we have a copy of the development agreement or whatever, purchase and sales, I mean, I don't.
Yeah. I'll send it to you tomorrow.
I just think it should be part of the hearing, Bill, understand.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those are available for sure. They're both executed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh wait.
The DA and the PNS.
Same there.
Is there a DA?
There's a DA.
Is there?
DA is attached to PNS, I believe.
Okay.
If I have it, I I'm sure, I'm pretty sure I do. I I s- do, I'll send it to you.
We, we did not have input on the DA, for the record.
No, but I just think it should be part of the hearing as.
Yeah, this does, it does personally.
Don't we usually have input on DAs?
No, you do. But the reason you did on this one is because there's no density bonus, or any of that. They didn't use.
Also is part of sale, not part of the rest of the permit.
Yeah, no, this one we don't. We do, when we give the density bonuses under the um. I don't remember the provision, but in the DOD, like everything we've done requires the select board and the um. Planning board sign off. If typically, it's just select board. If it was just like most stuff. I throw a S into it whenever I come, I remember saw our stuff, great, but that number wouldn't.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor to close the meeting, please raise your hand. By four zero, four zero is close the meeting.
Natalie wants to study.
That looks absolute all time.
Can't be in the meeting minutes.
That's fine.